The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
It's seven. Hello, everybody. Let's call our meeting to order. With the Pledge of Allegiance, stand for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, roll call, please.
Counselor Jill Kristensen, present. Counselor Gianoni. Mayor Bezinski.
Here.
Counselor Luddy.
Here.
Counselor Pagliaro.
Here.
Counselor Pennessa.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. So now we have our audience of citizens. So anyone wishing to address the council on anything? We have a sign-in sheet. And we have Mr. Bob Zipadelli. Line up, Bob.
Hi, my name is Bob Zipadelli. I'm from Schultz Road in town, Kensington. And I'd like to bring up what I see as a little bit of, not a problem, but it's a concern. Probably the best word. A few weeks ago, I was at the Berlin High School football game. And after the game, I went down to McDonald's with a buddy of mine. And there was a couple of lady friends there that happened to go to Berlin High School a couple of years after us. And we got to talking about the game. But after she talked about the game, the woman's name is Carol Spendalini. She said that she had some concerns about the safety of the stands, of being able to walk up the grandstands by not having any support railings. And I said, geez, it's funny you should say that because I have the same concerns. As we get up there in age, I mean, our balance is not as good as it was when we were youngsters. And it is a problem to just be walking without any kind of support. And she said that she sent a letter to three different groups in the town. So I'd like at this point to read the letter that was from Mrs. Spendalini. I can do that?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, because that basically says what the concern was. And it went to, attention, Town Manager, Athletic Department, Park and Recreation Department, to whom it may concern. I am writing this letter requesting well-needed hand railings to be installed on the bleachers at Sage. I must say that the new handicap ramps installed, which are state-required, are useful and safe for the handicapped and the elderly, attending different functions up to a certain point. Why then didn't you think to install hand railings going up and down the stairs where the three walkways are and for the other side as well? This all could have been done at the same time. Are these railings not considered part of a disability-safety code issue for public use? Not everyone would like to sit in the bottom row close to these handicap ramps. While attending functions at Sage Park, I along with other parents, grandparents, and yes, students, find this to be quite a hazard to climb up and down these stairs safely, which we cannot do, especially when wet, without holding onto railings. I know it is a bit late to have it done this year, just as I have waited for sending this letter, but I really think it should be given serious consideration and done soon. Better to handle this issue sooner than later, before something serious happens. I would appreciate some kind of response soon regarding this request, someone who is in charge of looking into this matter. Thank you from a proud Berlin resident who grew up in Berlin for the past 65 years. Carol Spendalini, Burldale Avenue, Berlin, Connecticut. And like I said, I was in care of the Town Manager Athletic Department and Park and Rec. I think she said that she did get a call back from a woman at Park and Rec. And I think the woman said that it strictly was funds. At this time, there weren't any funds available. I did stop in to see Mr. Healy this week, and we had a nice chat. And he did make some phone call to get an idea what it might cost to actually have something like this installed. And I did speak to our honorable mayor. So maybe there's something down the road that if we can look into possibly getting a grant, which would help with partial amount of the cost, or if not partial, maybe even all of it. So basically, that's what my concern is. Thank you very much.
Do we know what the cost was?
Thanks, Bob.
We have an estimate of about between $90,000 and $110,000. But that's a rough cost. And when Bob came in to see me, we spoke. We did take the letter, and we sent it to the building official. We sent it to our ADA coordinator. We're in compliance with the ADA codes. The issue being is that the walkway is a certain dimension wide. If you put the railings in, it would be out of compliance. So we can't just put the railings in. What we have to do is we have to widen the walkways going up and down the stands by cutting off each of the bleachers, welding a plate on there. So we have that. And Bob, we had a good chat, like Bob said. We talked about that. Jenna Choah, our ADA coordinator, has been working on this. And Doug Solik was giving us some rough numbers. So we're looking into it. We don't have it, we obviously don't have the budget right now. And Bob and I talked, we said, you know, maybe between Bob and us, we can try to find a grant like we did with the track and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Bob, like we spoke, having been on, we've all been on those bleachers many times. And I do think we do need to do something. They are difficult for, I think, anyone to navigate, certainly coming down especially. But, you know, walking.
You get old, Jim.
Well, yeah. And we're all headed there, like we talked. We hope we're all headed there, so we want to get there. So we got to find, I think it, we need to look for something. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I ran into Carol Spendalini. And when I was debilitated with my hips, I couldn't.
You couldn't even get up?
Couldn't get up.
Because you couldn't handle nothing all along.
Right. But I did notice at the high school, they don't have a center railing on the bleachers. They have a guardrail by the seat. Allows me to climb all the way to the top.
Oh, yeah, okay. They do.
I don't know. I don't think that would put us out of compliance because we're on the ends. But that may be something we could look into.
Yeah, we'll look into different options. I just want to make sure that, that's why I had the building department and our ADA coordinator make sure that we're doing, we don't, as you know, Peter, we get it. We have a situation that may be grandfathered. And if we start to do it, you may have to do everything. So we're just making sure we're doing it the right way.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for coming in and bringing that, and Mrs. Spendalini too, bringing it to our attention. So we'll definitely look at it. I think it's something we do need to do. Good point, you know? So we'll get it done. We'll find something, some kind of money somewhere. Hopefully, a grant can pay for some of it. And maybe we can match the rest or whatever we can get. So thanks. Okay, next on the list is Dave Evans. Welcome, Dave.
Good evening. David Evans, 1233 Worthington Ridge, here in our great town of Berlin. I'm an Assistant Scout Master, serving in Troop 24, the Mattabasset District in the Connecticut Rivers Council, the Boy Scouts of America. And here's some of the boys that came here this evening. Several of our boys are working, and the ones here are working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. You typically see Boy Scouts here for a few reasons, including recognizing Eagle Scouts and authorizing Eagle projects that benefit the town, as I watched in a recent Town Council meeting. It may be helpful to know why this group of scouts is here tonight, observing your meeting. They have a requirement to attend a city or town council or school board meeting or municipal, county, or state court session. I encouraged and maybe stared them a little bit towards this one just because it's dear to my heart. They are to choose one of the issues discussed at the meeting where a difference of opinion was expressed and explain to their counselor why they agree with one opinion more than they do another one. Although I hope we can always come to an agreement as a community. Hopefully, if you have a differing opinion, you will express it briefly so these scouts can see how differences can be worked through. I've indicated to their parents that we plan to stay until at least 8:00 p.m. So I request an efficient representative meeting and excuse us in advance if we step out before the completion of your meeting. Not to be rude. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So Dave, we'll have to look on our agenda. We're going to have to find something we disagree on, which we never disagree on anything up here usually. But we're going to find something tonight just so we can have our young scouts here see how it all works. So we'll work on that.
It's riveting.
Yeah. It's sad.
You stay awake.
See, you know, I disagree with that.
There we go. See, it didn't take long at all, but would it take less than a minute? See, that's not long. Okay, so thanks, Dave, and thank you, young gentlemen, for being here. And hopefully, you'll learn a couple of things tonight, maybe. So anybody else that wishes to address us during the audience of citizens? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close this part of the meeting, and we'll move on to our agenda. Starting with the consent agenda. Do we have one?
I want to make a motion to remove Consent Agenda Number Five and put that at the top of the New Business.
Second on that?
Second.
Someone had some questions.
Okay. Any other comments on that? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved? Okay, so we'll give that to the four, one there, or one A, whatever. So now we have our consent agenda. We've all reviewed it, and we'll take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the four items that remain on the consent agenda in front of us tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. All right, moving on to New Business, we'll move to our, I don't know what, what do we call that?
Yes, number five.
Number five, all right. All right, number five under New Business, off the consent agenda.
It's under consent.
Just the tree warden stipend and appointment. So do we have questions on that? Does the tree, we had a, the tree warden is?
You, it's a little complicated.
That's why we just had a question, that's all.
There was a tree warden, Brian Griswold. The state changed the regulations a few years ago such that the tree warden had to be certified. Brian is not certified. So when I got here, I am a certified tree warden, and I was on the tree warden board for the state. So when I got here, we covered it by saying, you know, if somebody sent the letter, I just said I was a tree warden. Which Brian Griswold retiring, I felt that the highway superintendent should be the tree warden. So Steve Karp went and took the course and became a certified tree warden. So what we're doing now is doing what the town council needs to do. And that is to appoint Steve Karp as the tree warden as required by the state.
Okay. Is that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is that something that he will do within the hours of work? He's already here? Or does he get called out? Like, how would you describe?
Yes and yes.
The use of a tree warden?
Yes and yes. The tree warden, you can do it during the hours of job, but you also get called after work to go look at trees. The issue is, you're supposed to do a survey of the trees and identify trees that are a hazard to the town and prioritize them and take those down. The other part of the issue is if, let's say, there's a tree that's identified as being a hazardous tree. And normally, with the other process, you would go and put a notice on the tree and have a public hearing if it was requested. If someone calls and says, I have a hazardous tree, you need to go out and look at it immediately. And if it is deemed to be hazardous, it needs to be taken down right away. Otherwise, the town incurs the liability that if that tree falls and injures somebody. And so, you know, we try to make it a high priority. So he does do work outside of the hours, and he does have to take courses and his certification credits.
Were we paying the stipends in prior years?
Brian, yes, you were.
Do we know, like, how many hours on average a week this position encompasses?
If I had to guess, you know, some weeks it's going to be nothing. Other weeks, it could be, there were times I was probably spending 20, 30 hours doing tree work. The reason being is currently, there are several insect, if you will, invaders. There's Emerald Ash Borer. And if you know anything about ash trees, when an ash tree starts to die, it dies immediately. And it starts to drop its limbs almost immediately, and that poses a hazard. So when I would do a survey of a road, you can do a survey of a road and certify, you know, look at each tree going down the street to make sure that it is safe. And sometimes you have to get a bucket truck to go up and look to make sure that the centers aren't rotting and things like that. So sometimes it's nothing, sometimes it's a lot of your time.
And it's funny that in my, some letter we just got from the Tree Wardens Association just so happens, I just happen to see it while we're talking about tree wardens, and just what you said, Jack, that they're talking about the issue of dead and hazardous trees into the spotlight in Connecticut. Urban and rural forests are suffering from drought, storms, attacks by insects. And tree mortality is skyrocketing. So managing dead trees, roadside tree mortality, as well as planting trees for the future. So this is just something that the association is trying to get out there. Hence, I guess we need our.
Road salt, I didn't mention road salt is the other thing. Road salt is causing a lot of damage. And we're, you know, 10 years ago, we used sand or sand mixed with salt. Today, we're using almost 100% road salt after a storm. We're putting down 300 tons per lane mile, excuse me, 300 pounds per lane mile of road salt during a storm.
So how did you come up with the stipend? Is it something that's in the budget and something that had been paid out in the past? Is it the same amount?
Yeah. It was, that was.
Have to do it over.
Move it over. In fact, Brian's getting, Brian's apparently got it this, this year, and Steve will get it going forward.
So if he were to get called out in hours outside of his normal work hours, does the stipend pay for that? He doesn't need his salary. He doesn't get overtime. Okay, so that covers that, then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
Any other comments? No, we're good. Okay, so we'll take a motion on that.
Okay, I move to appoint Stephen Karp as the Town Tree Warden, effective January 1, 2019, with a stipend of $1,200 and issued twice per year, totaling $2,400 per year.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, topic number one, New Business?
Okay, topic number one, item number one, is a request for a bike race on town land. We've done it in the past, you've had this bike race. And again, this year, the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program is requesting permission to hold a bike race on May 5, 2019, at the Hatchery Brook Conservation Area. And Mark Kazakowski is here to answer any questions regarding the race.
Hi, how are you? I'm Mark Kazakowski, Town Planner. So the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program has partnered with the Berlin High School Cycling Club. They want to do a bike race at the Hatchery Brook Conservation Area. This is the third year for the event. Last year, they had 120 riders. This year, and they anticipate 150 to 200 riders, which will race in groups of 50. First race will begin at 9:00 a.m., and then races will go throughout the morning, and the last one will be at 1:00 p.m. The course will be slightly modified from last year, and the grounds department has already agreed to mow a new path around an existing field area, which would provide a better experience for the riders. The Conservation Commission discussed the race again this past November and approved it, subject to the same condition as prior events, where the race organizers would do a walkthrough before the race and after the race with Conservation Commissioners to assess the pre and post conditions. And racer organizers would have to make any repairs caused by the racers. The competitor parking will be routed to Linden Drive and Summit Wood Drive as previous years. The police and fire departments have been contacted, and they agreed to work out the safety logistics when the event comes closer. And if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, it's the same group that did it last year, right?
Yeah.
Last year, so, no, there was no issues from everything?
No, nothing, nothing to know.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
We're good? All right, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to approve the request by Berlin High School Riding Red Coat Cycling Club and the Connecticut Cycling Advancement to approve a bike race to take place at the Hatchery Brook Conservation Area on May 5, 2019, with the condition that the applicants work with the Conservation Commission to assure that all the trails are in condition to accommodate a bike race and that the trails will be fully restored after the race.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, number two. Thanks.
Item number two is also from Mark. There's a request for a trail running race at Ragged Mountain. They would like, the Connecticut Trail Mixers would request permission to use the trail network on Ragged Mountain for a very interesting race. And Mark can explain to you, but it's not a race that I would want to do.
So the Connecticut Trail Mixers, they're a running organization in the state. They want to utilize the trail network at Ragged Mountain for a, call it a race, you call it a running competition, which would be held on June 15, 2019. I am told this is the first event of this kind in Connecticut. The race would start at 8:00 a.m., and a group capped at 50 runners would run a 5K loop around the trail. And then every hour, on the hour, the same group would start another loop. And they would continue to do these on the hour until.
Only one left?
Until there's one left. If you can't complete, if you can't complete the race on the hour, you're disqualified. Or if you opt out, then you're disqualified. So the parking will be arranged off-site. Littering by runners would be prohibited and cause disqualification. But the racer organizers will do a sweep of the trail and make sure everything's cleaned up. The event organizers has agreed to reach out to property owners in the area just to notify them of the event. The Conservation Commission reviewed this proposal in November, and they approved it with the condition that some signage be posted at the trails to just notify existing trail users that on this date, this event will be taking place. The police and fire department were also notified of this, and they'll work out safety logistics when the event comes closer. And I do have Stacy Clark and Brian Rocket Pure, close enough, available. They're from the Connecticut Trail Mixers, if you have any comments for them.
Okay. It's quite an interesting competition, huh?
It's true.
I bet it is. Yeah, I mean, as long as, I think that, right, I mean, one of the concerns is safety, obviously, making sure the runners are safe and anyone else that may be on the trail that day. I don't know, would they not let anybody wa, so they're running through the trail. I mean, I guess there's hikers.
Yeah, that'd be, well, if the hikers are notified, hopefully, they'll.
They'll stay.
They'll stay away from the area.
Yeah, hopefully. So as long as we have, yeah, the proper safety precautions, I guess, which I know you'll make sure of, and your association, I'm sure, is takes care of that too. So that's my question. Anything else? Have you guys got any other questions?
I just noticed that the Connecticut Cycling Advancement is involved.
Oh, that was a typo in the, they're not involved. Yeah, so you can scratch that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Are you thinking of entering?
Yeah.
I'll be right behind you.
Okay. It's interesting. Sounds like quite the race. All right, if no more questions, thanks, Mark, and we'll take a motion.
Okay, I'm going to read this as amended.
So we have to remove and the Connecticut.
Yeah, and the agenda. Just going to mention it.
Advancement in the motion?
In the motion.
Okay, so Brandon, it's just that part, don't mention.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Just going to mention that. I will read the amended motion here. Move to approve the request by the Connecticut Trail Mixers to approve a trail running race to take place at Ragged Mountain on June 15, 2019, with the conditions that the applicant works with the town staff regarding logistical and safety measures.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Happy running.
Item number three is a discussion and authorization for the Town Manager to proceed with the senior community center planning and design process. We're asking for a couple of things here. One is to allow me to sign the agreements to proceed with the grants for the work to be done on the studying for the community slash senior center. The second part is, at last meeting, we presented to you or gave you something, some homework to read about the process. And the process could go one or two ways. One is, the standard process, as is laid on the charter, is that we would get the statement of need, and we would, it would come to you, you would approve it, and it would go immediately to the Public Building Commission, and they would start down the road. Part of the, Jim Mahoney and I spoke many times, and we were trying to find a way of getting the public involved. And as you know, we had a couple of public hearings, the best attended was at the senior center. So the other option that Jim and I talked about, it doesn't follow exactly what the charter says, but was to form a committee of residents and people on the Park and Rec and Commission for the Aging, and have them put together a program that would then be given to the Public Building Commission. We wanted to present those both to you. It may be smoother to go and use the, you know, to go exactly by the charter. But I know there are people who want to be involved, so we wanted to give you that option. That's why we gave you that presentation. So we're asking you for, one, to give us, you know, permission for me to go ahead and start with the grants. The second one is if you would give us some guidance, either tell us to, you know, proceed with the public as normal with the Public Building Commission, or look into naming a committee. And Chris Edge is here, if you need any other information.
So if I understand this right, so one of the ways we could do it is, what we're looking for, obviously, out of the grant money, would be, we're going to hire initially some consultants, right?
Absolutely. You're going to need a consultant, because you're going to need a consultant who's going to take the, either form, either write a program for you. You need to have a program. And either the consultant puts that program together, and then, once they start to put that program together, they can start to put a footprint around it, and then look to see where property is available in town, which would suit the needs of what you're going to put together as far as the facility.
And is that before or after the statement of need?
No, the statement of need is the next thing that absolutely.
The next thing we have to do, right?
Actually, they've got them prepared. I've asked them just to hold them at this point until you were prepared to go forward. If you give us direction tonight, they will both give me those statements of needs tomorrow, and we'll start down that path.
So once we have that, we would, who hires a consultant, though? Isn't Public Building?
The Public Building Commission, if you go by way of the charter, would be the one to hire the consultant. And they have the standard process that they would go. You would send out a request for qualifications. You would get consultants who do this type of thing, submit their qualifications, they would interview them, and then they would hire, they would negotiate with one, hire, bring that person, that firm on, and they would start down the path of taking this information, formulating it into a program, and giving you a box that you could start to look at.
So just my thought, and then please, everyone, join in. My thought would be, maybe we follow the charter, so when we get to the, much like I think we did a little bit of that with the TOD, but so, you know, statement of need we have, go to the Public Building, they're going to find the consultants. And then when the consultants are hired, perhaps at that point, or we could, I mean, we could form this committee before, but while the consultants are here working on it, that this committee can be formed, and, you know, they could work in conjunction with the consultants, because that's the, kind of, the initial report, right? That'll come out.
Right. Consultants, if they do their job right, what they should do is, they should actually go and interview the Commission on Aging, the Park and Rec Department, and they should interview the Town Council Board, and they should interview all of the parties involved, including the public, and get their input. So that you put together, when I say a program, that tells you that, you know, we, either we want a swimming pool, we don't want a swimming pool. We want five rooms for the seniors, we want a kitchen for the seniors, we want this for the community center, and they put the, put this together in a box, so now you see what the footprint is that you're, that you really want. Right now, if you, if you ask, I'm not sure that we, I've seen, we've gone out, we've looked at several different community centers, and they differ. Some of them are just like very small, just, you know, a couple of rooms and things like that. Others, we went to one up in eastern part of Connecticut, it's, it's really nice, it's gorgeous. I mean, they got swim pools, they got gymnasiums, they got workout centers, they got meeting rooms, they got a senior center part, it's, it's very large, but it's very nice.
All right, I mean, that would just be my opinion, but whatever you guys think, I mean, let it, fit it in with the consultant, because that seems to be where the report will ultimately be generated to go further, I don't know. Whatever you guys think, what do you guys think?
Well, I, I know that there's a lot of people that step forward that would like to be involved, some of them are, and those commissions are ready, that you said may be interviewed, but can the Public Building Committee have an advisory committee within it?
I think they can, I think.
Do it that way?
Flexibility in there, that they could do that, I think that's probably.
Just keep them all together, you know, rather than.
There's not flexibility.
Spread out all over the place.
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, no, I, is that what this does?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Wouldn't do number two, you don't go to number two.
So, it would only be the first part of the motion, Peter.
Yeah.
The second part of the motion would.
Do the next one.
Really for the next meeting, to create the committee, but you would really do that through public building.
Public building.
So, it would not be where the council would create the committee, it would be done by the public building, made up of probably these members that you are.
Would we like tell, just say that's what, would the motion be next time, that's what we want, we want to go through the process and have, we want to make sure that the Public Building Committee gets that direction to, to do that, obviously, right? Make sure we tell them to do, how do we, I mean, because it's not the normal, it's not laid out in the charter that they would do that, right?
No, but they, they would take that under advisement, I mean, a building committee, a building committee normally goes and engages people.
Right.
They don't, they don't sit there, because they don't, they don't, they don't know what a, what a school needs or what a senior center needs. They're going to go and ask those questions, so they're going to work with those.
The consultant.
The consultant, to get that information.
So, so would we need, but I, we don't.
Send them a letter?
I think you sent them a letter. I think you sent a letter, Peter, saying, these are, this is what we would like to see happen, that's what I'll get to.
Yeah, I want to make sure they get the, right, we all agree, we, I want to make sure they get the direction to do what.
Send a letter?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. All right, so, we, what do we need on another?
You're only going to read the first part of the motion, and that would be, you would end the motion after approval of Corporation Council, period.
Got it. And, and we're just going to, so just.
And then the letter, we can, once the letter is sent to the Public Building Commission, we will CC all of you on it, so that you see it.
Great.
And we can make a part of the minutes, too. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And I will tell you, the seniors, because I've been going up to meet with them every couple of weeks, they are really gung-ho on this. They, they are, you know, they, they ask, I spent an hour and a half with them, and probably spent an hour just talking about this one item, they're really interested.
Well, that's why, you know, I, I think it's important that the Public Building Commission hears from us, that they should reach out to them and not, not exclude anybody that has some interest.
Yeah. I know it's a little premature, but do we have any idea like how big we want this prospective committee to be, or?
We, we had come up, Jim Mahoney and I had come up with some ideas, and, you know, the ones that I've worked with in the past are usually between seven and nine people, and I had come up with a list of, you know, people that I thought may want to be on it, you know, and try to, because you want to try to get different, different parts of the community.
Yeah, you want it to be diverse.
Yeah, diverse. If, and as part of this, you're going to probably want somebody from the schools, because I think you want to make this, from what I've heard, there's always the discussion about a swimming pool, because Berlin doesn't have a swimming pool for our home needs, so that would be part of it. The senior, obviously, you want, you know, people from the Commission on Aging, you're going to want people from Park and Rec. I've had several people from Park and Rec say they want to be part of it, because they want to, they want to, they want to, you know, at least keep the programs they got, expand the programs they have. The community center, they use the community center. I know that Jen, when I've talked to Jenna Choa, they want to make sure that, you know, they, we, we rent out our community center for programs all the time. If you try to book it, it's booked all the time because of our location, so it, it's going to be a broad, they have to have a broad spectrum on, on the members.
And just one more point for the record is that, as Corporation Council just mentioned to me, that this subcommittee is still under FOI. They have to post their agendas, and they're going to have to do minutes. So, just to be reassured that those will have to be followed, all right?
Good.
Okay.
Yeah. That's good. Okay, I, just on this motion though, so I thought we already authorized you to submit the grant application, I thought I already went in.
No, this is the, we submit the, that was the contract.
No. No, we never sent the?
The agreements are, the agreements, we're negotiating, we're going through the agreements now. I think Jeff's, our attorney, has looked at them. I think there's a couple more changes that we, we have to finalize. We have some standard language in it that we're not, we're not comfortable with, but we're finalizing the contract, which is about 40 pages long.
Ah, okay.
I have to not to send that to you.
Okay. I will move to update the authorization for the town manager to submit a grant application and enter into necessary agreements and documents to secure the grant or amendments thereto regarding a $750,000 grant for the planning and design of a senior and community center subject to the review and approval of the Corporation Council.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Agenda item number four is the, is an RFP for the architectural and engineering design services for the Schalise, services for the Schalise Artificial Turf project at Sage Park. I know we've talked about this very near, so now, and we're, so we're really getting to wind it up, we need an architect. Jenna Choa is here to talk about the process.
So, it's finally happening. Finally going to do Schalise. So, we went out to bid for a design and architectural engineering firm, we got three bids back, panel of five of us interviewed all three of them, two stood out more than once, we went with the low bidder. Steve Wood and I already have a relationship with this individ, with this firm, they've helped us out a lot in the past, and the group of five of us all agreed that this would be the best way to move forward, this way we can get started right away, get out to bid, and really get the project going. The rest is any questions?
Yeah.
$3,000 is a lot of money for an architect. What do you have to design on where to put the grass, or what color to pick?
They have to do certain testing, Mike's more familiar with that kind of stuff. They're going to, a lot of it will help with the bid specs as to what kind of chrome rubber we want, what kind, if we want it, we're putting in a shock pad, which is new to us, so what kind of shock pad we want to put in, which will all go into the specs of the bid package, but some of the geo-something testing.
What they're going to do is part of their initial set, and that's why there's a 20% contingency on top. Their base bid was 25, 375, but there's a 20% contingency on that, because what they're going to do is peel back several sections of the turf and actually expose the stone base, do permeability testing, and also check out what the condition of the base is. They find something that's a little off, they might have to do some geotechnical, some soil borings, get a report from an engineer. They also, in their assessment, may have to get some, we think that we have good survey information, because it was done 14 years ago, and there's an ASBIL survey. So, there, they looked at that and they said, we don't think we need to do a full-blown survey, survey, but if they have an issue where they might see some parts of the areas where they need shots, or something mapped, contingency will take care of that without us coming back to you for that.
Right now, they're not designing any new drainage system or anything, it's going to make sure that it's.
Yeah, exactly. And they actually, I was impressed with their proposal, because the qualification section, they actually looked, their analysis of the existing field, you could tell someone was there and spent a lot of time and analyzing it. I was like, in my notes on the qual pack, I said, someone really took a detailed look. So, they went through, and I think they're familiar with the field, because one and both have, one of the representatives has kids who've played on it, so they're actually have been on that field and seen how it's operated, so.
And they'll be there through the whole project, they'll be project managers throughout the whole, they'll be onsite once a week and.
Is there an additional fee for that, or is that included?
Onsite once a week is included.
Yeah, that's included. Their proposal's pretty all-in, which is all-inclusive, except for survey and geotechnical work.
Which they're hopeful and thinking they probably won't need.
Right.
Is that, that's include, was that include, so the, whatever our budget was when we passed this, whatever it was, the $900,000, whatever it was, is that part of that budget, I assume, we're not going over?
Yeah, this, this was part of the bond, the bond, money we bonded.
And one, one thing I just read, I don't know, I don't know what town it was, but you know how there's the controversy over the rubber?
Right.
Crushed rubber, and I know it's, I'm back, you could read either way, right? But they were using something else, what, what town was that recently? I just, I can't remember what they were using instead of crushed rubber.
There's three, there's three infill systems, there's chrome rubber.
Yeah.
There's coconut husk and cork, and there's acrylic coated sand.
Oh, was the sand, this?
Three infill systems.
This town was using the sand, I can't remember which town, it was somewhere around here.
Problem with the sand is it absorbs water and is not great for the Gmax.
Okay. How about the, what's the other one, cork? No.
It's a coconut, it's a new material.
Okay.
Grows mold, have to replenish it, you have to irrigate it quite a bit.
Okay, okay.
Very high maintenance infill.
Let's do it right.
Got you. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I just, I know there was those concerns, but I, I know you will look at that.
Long time overdue.
Well, no, I mean, we got to get it done, I just want to make, you know, we don't, we did have, you know, there is, some towns won't put the rubber in, so we just need to make sure we cover that base too, with whatever research we can find out there.
While I realize we're talking about the consultant for the field, let's keep in the back of our minds, if we do go to bid, that we can maybe slip the railings in there too, so. You know, I mean, it's the same field.
That was actually, Steve Wood and I had a meeting this morning to prep for this, and we had talked about it. It would mean amending the bond, and we still, once we get the bid package back and we have an idea of what the cost is, we could look at it.
Okay.
Possible addition there.
Thank you.
You might want to think about getting a design for it, so that you don't trigger a full ADA compliance project, or you have to put an elevator in.
I also reached out to my ADA group in the state to see if anyone has any familiar grants that they've done for something like this, so I'm waiting to hear back from them too.
North Haven did a grandstand ADA compliance project, but it was 12 years ago, same code, but.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
I think Doug actually had talked to a, to an architect about, and that's how he got the number, it wasn't a full design, but it was a review, and they came up with that, that number, or you, it was you that did it, okay, I got it from Doug, Jen did the, the, the contact. So, we, we're starting on that path, we know what we have to do.
Dave, are you really going to make these kids stay here till eight? I feel so bad for them.
Can you disagree on something?
I was thinking, let's play act.
Let's find something we can have a huge argument about, you guys can write something down at least, you know, this is.
You're dying over here.
What's, yeah, I know, I noticed that, yeah. We're dying up here too, so don't feel so bad, it's okay, but we, we can put up with it a little bit more.
I disagree with you.
Yeah, there we go, that's it. Uh, well, let's see, is there, well, all right, so, well, let's move on from this one, and then maybe there's, if there's something here that's.
Try to make the.
We want to end on an exciting note, Dave, so they, they have a memorable experience here.
Okay, I will move toward the request for proposal 2019-06, and authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Castle Blues Associates, Inc., for architectural engineering design services for Schalise Artificial Turf Field at Sage Park, or not to exceed $33,375, including a $5,000 contingency.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number five, I don't think it's very controversial.
All right, oh, come on.
But anyway, we're requesting permission for a bid waiver for the concrete sphere bollards at the Berlin High School. A couple of years ago, the, the high school in, in the town requested a, a grant, and got the grant, and including the grant was the installation of some bollards at the high school. In the interim, the, the project got, didn't, didn't get picked up, so recently in a conversation with Brian Bedigny, he asked us if we could pick it up again. Steve Wood had done quite a bit of legwork on this, and gone out and talked with several firms about installing the bollards, and only a couple responded to us, and one of them was much higher than the other, so, and the bollards that we're selecting are the ones that they, they would prefer to have. And these bollards will be installed, 16 of them in front of the high school, and it prevents a situation where anybody can drive through that glass. It's something we should do. And in order to fund it, Brian, excuse me, Kevin Delaney has laid out for you, there's a, there's a transfer from the radio system, the radio system's installed, we have money left over and that, and it happens to be the right amount of money we need for the bollards. So, in the motion, we're requesting that you also authorize the transfer of the funds, so that they would be available for the bollards, and we will install those in January or February.
Okay. So, take a motion on this?
Okay, move to approve the transfer of $15,683.11 from the radio system upgrade account into the CNR fund to, to transfer from other funds account in the school security fund.
Any second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions?
It's all-inclusive, the town forces won't have to do any restoration or anything?
No, this is all-inclusive.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
And two, also further move to appropriate $15,683.11 to the security equipment account in the school security fund for the purchase and installation of bollards at Berlin High School.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. And?
Okay, move to waive the bidding requirements and award the contract to Decocio Brothers, Inc., of Weathersfield, Connecticut, I apologize if I said that wrong. Okay, for the purchase and installation of 16 30-inch concrete gray sphere bollards at Berlin High School for the amount not to exceed $15,683.11, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, thanks.
Onto agenda item number six, authorize town manager to close on the purchase of 861 Farmington Avenue, if, if you know what's building that, is the one with the drain doctor in it. We've been negotiating this for quite a while. Chris Edges is here to discuss any of the details.
Yes, this is, we've worked on this previously, this money comes from a grant from the state to purchase the property. We've worked with the property owner as well as gotten environmentals done, so we know what we're going into. This essentially gives town manager the ability to close on the property. Essentially, this is one of the ones that's adjacent to 889, so the purchase essentially is to assist us long-term with the liability issues related to the groundwater in 889, and essentially is in that TOD area.
And what, again, why, what was the reason for, why are we doing this now?
The main reason is to, the long-term liability with the groundwater, which is coming off of 889. So, controlling the property, essentially, we will then be in control of what happens going forward, also be able to look at the entire area from a development side.
And, but, do we, we don't see any contamination there, right, yet? Or there, there, we don't know? We're not sure?
We don't, we don't have that. That's one of the reasons for buying the property.
Right. Okay. You know, I just want to make that clear for everyone. So there's a reason the town is not in the habit of buying, you know, property like this, but under these circumstances. So, you know, everyone's clear. Uh.
Are we buying an expensive problem potentially?
Well.
This flows from the town foreclosing on 889.
Yeah.
This is the direct result of that.
We already got ourselves into that before.
Talking about migration.
Yeah, but.
Migration from 889.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, so, right. And Charlie, that's actually a good way of looking at it. It's really trying to get out of the situation we found ourselves in with the adjoining property. This was the right corporation council, the way to get out of this and make sure we have no other.
It's all driven by that.
Yeah.
And we have an insurance policy for the off-site migration. So essentially what happens in the adjacent properties is covered by an insurance carrier, which actually will be part of the next item. So we do have insurance coverage on that piece of it.
I remember that.
It's just assisting us as we go through, so we're in better control of where things head.
What will happen to the existing businesses?
At this point, we haven't determined what's happening with those. Um, we had not, we don't have any immediate plans at this point. We're really hoping that we can purchase the property, get our arms around what's happening as well as with the folks presenting later tonight. But we've made no definitive decisions on that.
So we purchased the property, most likely will be able to stay there for a while.
Right now, we have, again, we have many decisions about that. Um, some of that, some of that is dependent on, um, how we go forward with the TOD project. Because it's all contiguous property.
All right. Yeah. I mean, I, I, we have no, I mean, I just, you know, none of us, the last thing we need is another piece of town-owned property. But, but certainly understand why we're doing it and it's, makes sense.
There's always the possibility, Chris, if the project moves forward, that this can be incorporated and we can sell it.
Our, our hope is that we would be able to look at that for the long-term, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay. Um, so we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Okay. I move to authorize the town manager to execute all documents and take all necessary actions on behalf of the town to close on the purchase of 861 dash 65 Farmington Avenue for $300,000 to be funded from the property acquisition for transit-oriented development grant account, subject to review and approval of the corporation council.
Second on that?
Thank you.
Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Okay. Agenda item number seven, again for Chris, is the authorization for revision to the contract for Larrero Engineering Consulting Services for 889 Farmington Avenue.
Yes. Uh, Larrero Engineering has been the consultant we've been working with for at least the four years I've been here on board. Essentially what the $12,000 is, one, it is covered by our insurance carrier. Two, it is to verify that the groundwater is not going beyond the 861 property. So essentially before we purchase it, we want to make sure we understand the full breadth of where the groundwater is going. So essentially just testing to make sure it's not going off of that property. This is within the existing contract, covered by the insurance company.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, take a motion.
Okay. I move to waive the town's bidding process and authorize the town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Larrero Engineering to install three groundwater wells in the Farmington Avenue right-of-way to complete one round of sampling for a fee of $12,410. That is to be paid by our insurance carrier, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Agenda item number eight, we just talked, we've been talking about the TOD concept plan for 889, 903, 913 Farmington Avenue. Tonight, Mark Kozakowski is here with members of the Newport Realty Group to give you a presentation of a concept plan for that property.
Great. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming.
So as you're aware, the town owns a 3.8 acre parcel adjacent to the train station on Farmington Avenue. Through the RFQ process, we signed an exclusive negotiation agreement with Newport Realty. Town staff, town consultants, developer, developers, consultants have engaged in a very iterative process of, uh, creating a concept plan, um, to, to, um, to move forward. And that was as a condition of the negotiation agreement. No action is needed from the council tonight, but we want to take this opportunity to show you what we've been working on and hear your input and make sure that our vision is shared by your vision on what we want to do in the, uh, the downtown Kensington Village. In your packets, you did get a, a little description of what, um, what you're going to hear today. We are at a critical point where, um, if we want to move forward with a purchase and sale, with text amendments, subdivision plans, acquiring roads. We're just, um, trying to get some feedback from the community and then the community leaders to see if we're going in the right, going in the right direction. They, Newport, um, provided a similar, uh, presentation to the Planning Zoning Commission last week, two weeks ago, and, uh, we had, they got some, uh, positive comments from them. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we would like to, uh, present to you what, what we have and, uh, and hear what you have to say.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, Mark Lovely, can you see? Mark Lovely, um, principal at Newport Realty Group. I'm here tonight with, uh, Tony Valente, which is a principal of Newport Realty Group. President of Lovely Development. Um, basically, we're here to talk about, um, 889 Farmington Avenue, which is 1.65 acres. 903, which is 1.45 acres and 913, which is .72 acres. In our plan of development, we are working, um, and hopefully successful with the town to purchase 861, which is, uh, .20 acres, which is, it comes to a total of 4.02 acres. If I show here, let's see if I can see from an angle here. So this being the site, uh, in, uh, orange here, this one being 861, um, and then the other three parcels here. Train station is to the west. We have the old Berlin Steel area to the north. So I can give a basic idea where we are. I'm going to turn this around. Okay, perfect. Everybody see okay? Basically, building A, which you see right here, is going to be a two-story building. We have, um, Tom from Quiz and Barry in Arcary, uh, with his Carolina, his associate here tonight to show you some preliminary architecture also. So building A, um, is a footprint of 5,184 square feet. Two stories for a total square footage of, uh, 10,368. Plan is to be retail on the first floor and some medical office on the second floor. Building B will be a mixed-use retail and residential. Uh, we have three stories total. First floor being 7,118 square feet, and that's that building right there. The second floor will be 16 units, a total of 14,000 square feet, two more floors, um, for a total, uh, which will be residential for a total, uh, 21,054 square feet total in, in building B. Building C is a single-story building, which is right here. This one does have outdoor seating, so as building B does also. Um, this, we feel, will be 1,600 square feet. It's going to be some sort of a small restaurant, coffee shop, deli, something like that. That'll be great for community use. Um, across from building B, we have a focal point here that we've talked to town staff about possibly working with the historic district to put something there. Uh, we do have a little paper brick area where, um, we could set up something that's a monument to the town and a monument to this area. Building D, you see here, that building there is going to be four stories. But what happens is the four-story will be in a mansard roof. Because of the environmental in the area, we need to do parking underneath because we have to cap that area two feet, put parking underneath, and then the habitable area is approximately about 10 feet above that. That'll be three stories, um, above the parking, but it's going to end up looking, you'll see in the architecture, it's going to look like a three-story building because the, the top level is in a mansard roof, so it's in roofing. That building there is 23,500 square feet. We have building E is the same type and mirrors it. We have a clock tower in the center. Uh, this being in, uh, a center courtyard that coming in, there will be parking underneath the building, so we don't see so much parking throughout the whole development. Your passageway through, which is your boulevard right here, parking off each side of the road. We have done crosswalks here, crosswalks here to get into future developments. We have left legs for future developments also. Parking here. The only real main access way is through here. We do have this because there is a right-of-way that, um, that is needed to this building back here that they need to keep. This will be one way out only through the back of here, which we'll work with this property owner, um, to do something with the parking lot back there. Um, there's some parking questions.
I'm sorry, what is the use of the two buildings to the left?
These two buildings to the left right here?
Yeah.
Those will be residential. So the total, um, total residential over, it will be 76 units. Uh, total square footage of the whole development will be 80,022 square feet of the total development. We have 76 apartments. Um, 30% will be two-bedrooms, 70% will be one-bedroom studios. Square footage-wise, 600 to 900 square feet. We don't really see a lot of families. We see more younger generation, um, taking the train to work, um, supporting the restaurants and the shops in the area that we have in the development and along Farmington Avenue. Total number of parking spaces throughout the development, we have 199, meets the regulations for planning and zoning that when we presented two weeks ago. And that's pretty much it on the, uh, the buildings itself. Accessways, uh, that we have designed does meet all the standards for the roadways, for town roadways and different things like that. Basically, just want to try and give it a downtown effect to fit in with, um, what you guys have done downtown, um, Kensington so far. It's exciting. Any questions on the development before?
Yes.
Yeah. Here you go, Dave. All right. I, I don't see a boulevard connecting the train.
Okay. What this is, this is the boulevard that comes from Farmington Avenue. There is a stub right here, right now, that's already built to the train station. We're going to tie right into that.
I see a, a, a street with parking on both sides of it.
Yep. That's what it'll be. It'll be like, it's just like a, uh, downtown where what happens is this is actually a 30-foot accessway between that, um, which is a town road, just like in a downtown with park, angled parking on each side.
And you think that's sufficient for two-way traffic?
Yes. Yep. It's designed, we've actually worked with the, um, the company you have designing the boulevard, um, for the town. We've worked with them and this is to their standards. We've actually already presented to the, um, to the state also, had a meeting with them about this and they, they blessed this plan too. Uh, we did do two plans, one with straight-in parking, one with angled parking. Everybody thought the traffic flow would be better with the angled parking instead of straight-in.
And has the Economic Development Commission seen this?
That, that's our next step. We wanted to bring it to planning zoning first, bring it to you guys, and then that'll be our next step.
Good luck.
Thank you.
There's no more questions. We can come back to this. I'll introduce Tom Arcary from Quiz and Barry in Arcary.
Thank you very much. My name is, I gotta downsize this a little bit. My name is Tom Arcary from Quiz and Barry, Arcary and Malik Architecture. We're at 195 Scott Swamp Road in Farmington, Connecticut. So at this point, we're really working on some concept modeling for the development. These are just ideas. These should be in no way considered a final solution by any means. Our major focus at this point is to look at two things. One, how is the massing of the building, um, going to relate to the adjacent structures in the area? And two, conceptually, how can we, um, create a, a street, a sidewalk, a walkable community? Or a walkable area within the community and try and, um, generate some ideas that we can get feedback on. Massing-wise, um, you can see, or, oh, let me start here. So this is Farmington Avenue. Um, below us, as Mark mentioned, this is a proposed boulevard. That boulevard will be 30 feet wide. That was discussed. Keep in mind, the typical width of two-way drive is 24 feet. So this will be a wider drive aisle than a typical road. Um, it will be lined by, um, streets, uh, sidewalks on both sides. The corner of the development will house, house a two-story building. This will be business or medical office, as Mark mentioned, potential retail. The center building, um, will be a three-story structure with, um, restaurant, retail, commercial-type use at the lower level, activating the streetscape. You can see, um, the goal is to have exterior patios for those functions and have visual, um, acuity to Farmington Avenue with, um, housing apartments above. Again, uh, one, mostly ones. As you move around the corner, there'll be the small structure here, the cafe or deli. And then in the background, the apartment structure, you can see that there's parking underneath and then three fours of housing. The upper floor is designed so it appears that the, um, residences are built under the roof of the structure. This next. Thanks, Mark. Here's a view, um, from, uh, Farmington Avenue looking east. I believe east. And this is the, um, the mid, the middle building. Here's that proposed, uh, restaurant-type space with the housing. You can see that the scale of the buildings is in keeping with the scale of the adjacent structures down the streetscape. And again, trying to keep the face of the structures approximately in line so that we're maintaining, uh, the streetscape at Farmington, the street wall at Farmington. That one, you can put it right on top. And again, this is a view from the opposite direction, um, down Farmington Avenue and looking into the turn. We envision maybe a tall, um, vertical element. It may or may not look like this. But to mark the corner of the entrance to the boulevard, and the last image is here. And then this is a concept view of the residential structure looking from the train station. You can see formal drop-off canopy. There'll be access to the parking underneath. Um, and then this focal point at the entrance. So again, at this point, um, these are our thoughts about what the development might be. We have a long way to go. Um, we'll be working with town staff and lots of other vested entities and champions, including yourselves, taking your feedback and thoughts and hopefully making the development better as we go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, appreciate you guys coming to, uh, show us this, uh, initial plan. So, you know, obviously, we, I know we spent a lot of time in, uh, getting you here and it's great you're, uh, working with the town. And so, and, and, you know, obviously, I know you're, you're the experts. You've done a lot of, uh, developments other places. So, you know, I know the concern that allows, a lot of residents have said through the years is, uh, you know, the housing units, I want to make sure that it's right for the town, that obviously they're able to be rented and, you know, that it's a vibrant core of our town because we, we kind of got one shot at it now, obviously, and, yeah, we want to get it right, so.
Yeah, we've, we, that's pretty much us. We've talked, we work with town staff and work with them and we, and between that, that's why what happens is we have that many percentage of one-bedrooms because we feel getting that younger generation down there too. And even in Sellington, when you think in the younger generation today, there's a lot of people that are in their 40s that are single, that are working as teachers, firemen, policemen, they don't have time, they don't, couldn't be cooks at home anymore. They go out. So that's what happens. They're down there to walk along Farmington Avenue, walk throughout this development and eat. You have all the shopping right there with Super Stopper shop and everything right along Farmington Avenue. So we think that's going to be very vibrant. And today with the travel, with the train station being right there, seeing how many stops they have increased to, um, is a big proponent to this.
I think the Meriden did something similar, right?
Yes.
Around their, uh.
Exactly.
I, I know the other towns probably are.
Yeah.
Going to think similar, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
Uh, and these are market-rate apartments?
Market-rate apartments, yes.
What would the market rate be out of curiosity?
We're looking at somewhere right, with a, with a one-bedroom, somewhere in the range around 1350 and then with a, um, with a two-bedroom, somewhere around 1650, 1700.
Rents are very expensive in Connecticut these days.
Are unbelievable.
Yeah, I've been reading.
You know the problem, the cost of construction? The cost of construction in our industry in the last, uh, about four years has gone up over 23, $24 a square foot.
Right.
This is a beautiful thing. Our downtown certainly needs a, a focal point. But has you done a market study? Because a number of years back, the town put a lot of money, um, through tax abatement into a project across the street from here. And it really hasn't been a busy retail operation. We haven't rented it at all.
I will tell you, you know what the problem is, is with the retail? You're not going to get as much as they want to charge for that retail. They're charging 22 to $24 a square foot. And we've done some market research. I've actually, I've been doing this 34 years and I own medical office buildings, office in Sellington, retail plazas in Sellington and stuff like that. You're going to need to give a little bit away on the office retail to, to fill up. You have to. That's the way these developments work. You can't expect to make 22, $24 a square foot.
Whatever you do, I just want it to work.
Yeah, no, definitely. That's our plan. Yeah, that's our plan. You need to really be, and that bottom floor, you need to be $15 a square foot for those.
How do you fund this?
Um, from, we have banks, we already have letters from banks that are interested in funding.
Private funding? The town won't have to?
Nope, private funding.
Again, to the parking. Have you done a study on how many spaces you lose if you do parallel parking there?
We actually gain spaces. A parallel, a parallel right here, we actually lose space when we do parallel. If I remember correct, on, along the boulevard, it was 15.
How many?
15.
15?
Yep.
I'll direct you to Main Street, Kensington. Are you aware of the situation there?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Well, let the economic development give you that.
Hey, thank you.
That may determine, be a determining point for them.
Okay.
On that kind of parking.
No, I appreciate it. We'll talk to you.
So I find all of this extremely exciting. And I think what you, what you presented here is very impressive. It seems luxurious. It seems upscale. And that's what I think, uh, some of the people you're going to be catering to as far as, uh, housing for the apartments, that's what they're going to want, right?
Exactly.
Millennials want that.
That's what.
Starbucks, they want that. Uh, I think they're going to want like a gym. I don't know if there's a plan for a gym.
There is a plan for a gym in, in the, uh, in the apartment building also.
Yeah, so I mean.
Meeting space.
That's all really good news. Um, and the outdoor seating to make it like a, a nice area. I mean, just a few, these are my own personal thoughts.
We appreciate those. That's what we're here.
I, I like the downtown West Hartford Center feel with the brick sidewalks or the stamped concrete that looks like brick. You know, when you go to the north end in Boston, they have that brick and it just feels really.
It does. It feels home.
Scale. And it, you know, there's enough charge there. I get it. And then the, uh, I'm not really a fan of the angled parking. I like, uh, I like how you have it there, um, with the, what would you call that? Just straighten?
Straight in, yep. We actually gain spaces when we do that also.
Yeah. I, I personally like that.
Straight in?
Yeah. Yeah. I like that better.
Why, why did you go to the angle again?
Um, comments from, uh, the state and, um, our, some, we're meeting with town staff and stuff. It's pretty much.
I think safety-wise, what, what ends up happening inevitably when you have that angled parking is someone going the wrong way sees they're all full and they see one on the left and they're going to take a super wide-angle turn to try and steal it. We all do it, right?
And this is all a concept too, so this isn't carved in stone. Yet we are still working with town staff.
And then lastly, the, the green space there.
Over at this side?
Yeah. What, is that, uh, what's, what's up with that property? Is that staying green or can that be for future development?
Basically, right here now, this will remain green. This is where your focal point will be for whether it's a fountain, it's something to do historically. We did leave a stub in here, so this, when the other properties are acquired, this could be a stub off of the main ter, um, boulevard to be able to build more buildings back in here.
And that could be developed?
Exactly. It's our plan. We're trying to look to the future too, not just to this development.
Right, right.
And our plan. Hopefully it will be before you're doing that.
Looks good.
Thank you. Yes.
Back to the parking, uh, is there one space per apartment or are there two spaces for the two-bedrooms?
What happens is right now our parking density, even if with the one-bedrooms, it's 1.5, um, per, per unit.
And is there a fee for parking?
There is not a fee for parking right now.
What would, what would the, um, the units, how would they vary? In other words, you know, just in terms of design?
What would the units, how would they vary? In other words, you know, just in terms of design and will you have some that are higher ceilinged than others, you know?
That's our plan. When you get up into, these will be all about nine-foot-high ceilings. We won't do any eight-footers. We're going to do nines. And then when you get up into here in the upper deck, you'll be a little bit higher with those, probably closer to ten with the ceilings, with the roof plan. And then these over here will all be nines in here. But a lot of them are eight feet today, but we're going with nines with these. Tough to go any higher because we don't want the buildings to look overbearing from the other buildings on Farmington Avenue now. That was our thoughts, why we didn't go any taller with those and that number.
Why did you go pitched on building A and then the other ones are flat roof?
Just to make the look a little bit, because when you go to different downtowns, like if you look at Saratoga Springs, New York and stuff, they've done different architecture up there. So they all just didn't look like monologue. They were all a little different in its own effect.
Maybe we could put the racetrack in the back, right?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Future.
I think our village district requirements require different, different, you know, architecture designs for different buildings so that they're not all the same.
Yeah, we try and make it so the development's appealing to and doesn't all look exactly the same. That's why we try to break up some different colors and different schemes like that. But we can talk, we can talk to town staff about the parking. And I know they have a consultant that is working on the Boulevard entryway too, so they can take that back to them.
Yeah, just point well taken from Peter is, yeah, just, we don't want to make that.
We appreciate it. That's what we're here for. Definitely. We're here for.
I mean, it's a different, I mean, it's a little bit different area, but thank you guys for coming. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, they can't wait to get. Yeah, just make sure. But I mean, it's different than Main Street, I think, but nonetheless, probably need to make sure we.
I appreciate that. We appreciate your feedback.
So you guys did a great job. Appreciate all your hard work. And it looks, it looks nice. And I know there's still a lot more work to do. And I think all of us, whether it's planning and zoning, whether it's the council, whether it's EDC and everybody in town, really, we got a shot here to, you know, do something really, really nice finally. We've always hoped for a Berlin Town Center, Berlin Kensington Town Center, which we've really never had. So this is sort of the hope, you know, that we're looking for. So we got our shot. We want to get it right. We appreciate you guys working with us.
And we appreciate you working with us too. And we're excited to see it to come fruition, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, you too. Thank you. Like that. It's really impressive.
Here we go. Item number nine is the report on the possible consolidation of the water districts. Again, we gave you some reading homework material to read, and Ray Gervais is here today to go over the report.
Ten-minute report.
Excuse me?
It's going to be ten minutes.
Evening, everyone.
Hey, Ray.
At the behest of Jack, I wrote this report almost a year ago. If it's not good, then I'm going to blame him. But anyway, reality is that in order to move the ball forward, it was the idea that we should put something together. And so I'm not a literary expert by any means. I'm an engineer and I like numbers rather than writing stuff. So this was meant to basically put together things that I found in the file. And there's obviously a lot of things still in the file that I haven't discovered. But what I wanted to do is point out some of the issues here and fallacies in terms of what goes on. One of the biggest fallacies currently is the rates. I did a rates analysis quickly. I put it in there. And I also did another one, which I'd like to share with you at another time. I don't have it with me, to actually look at my bill. And I was hoping Dave would stay for this, but Dave Evans is also on the Worthington Fire District bill. And I looked at my bill, and we're very low users as water. And I applied the Berlin Water Control new rates on that. And actually, the rate for that came out to be six twenty-two. And then when I applied the, for that was for Worthington. If I applied the Berlin Water Control rates to that same thing, it came out to three hundred dollars. And the Kensington Fire District system, if you applied it, was five hundred dollars. So Berlin Water Control is the cheapest. And factually, I just wanted to point that out because that doesn't always come out in the facts.
And that's because of their supplementing with that additional tax?
Correct. Exactly. Because regardless of you, if you use it, and you can think of a lot of folks who go to Florida or down south for three or six months and don't use their water. Regardless of their usage, they still get billed on the real estate tax. Worthington has a one-point-seven-mill one and currently Kensington has a one-point-one mill. So based on your water consumption, it's not based on your water consumption. It's based on your house value. House value goes up, your water rates go up and your sewer rates go up automatically.
That's very interesting. I think, I'm not sure many of us that have lived in town.
Well, I didn't realize it myself until I started looking at the numbers and then realized that Berlin Water Control was fairly cheap. And then basically, I mentioned this to you earlier, going through the files, the Berlin Water Control, the town per se subsidized the Worthington Fire District and Kensington Fire Districts very substantially. In other ways, they developed mains, water mains and lanes, allowing the Worthington District and the Kensington District to expand, which basically now they have the additional customer base, but it was on the Berlin Water Control finances that it actually occurred.
I mean, and you went back, I know the history's murky, obviously, from what you have, but so it wasn't always, I mean, it seems like they formed a water district. You would charge a water bill like Berlin does, but they, how did they get the property tax in there?
I don't know. Well, the original legislation, like it does for most taxing districts, allows you to do a tax.
Tax, right.
So, but this one was sort of unique, and it doesn't do it in all of them cases because not every town does it, applies it that way. Very fat, and actually, very few actually use a mill rate of tax. It's a water usage fee per se. And most of them are do it on that basis, period. Not the valuation of the house. That doesn't come into play at all.
Yeah, that seems pretty unfair. So, I mean, I think you say it in here.
Well, the other thing I wanted to point out is it's lengthy, but it's not really that complicated because what I tried to do is stick to the facts, things I found, and then put the supporting information for that attached to it so that you can go back and take a look at it and say, where did this come from? Where is it say this? And the only other thing I would want to point out is that the enabling legislation is something that needs to be looked at carefully. It is basically expansive. It required quite a bit of things that they were supposed to do that have not been done. And I don't know why. I don't know if that's been altered, that haven't been changed. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I basically wouldn't be able to comment on that other than the fact that it was, the districts were established for many purposes. One, water was one, and then some other additional items were added on later on.
So then.
What if, is it feasible, maybe Jeff may know the answer to this, that we dissolve these districts by legislation?
I don't have an answer to that. There is a mechanism for dissolution because actually Attorney Weber, when he was town council at the time, came up with a report. And I don't know if I included it in here, but there was a mechanism for actually dissolution of the districts. It's a very small vote that's required by the district themselves. Now, I don't know if Attorney Dinoff.
We understand that, but since they're a creature of the legislature, is it possible?
Well, there's a statute, seven dash three twenty-nine of the general statutes that Ray is referencing that requires, I think it's ten percent of the members of the.
That's correct.
District. So you have a mechanism, a statutory mechanism to dissolve it. If you wanted to alter that, you could have an amendment to seven dash three twenty-nine. If you wanted to expand to the legislative body of the town, the ability to dissolve a district, you'd have to amend the statute. Because right now, the statute gives that power exclusively to the members of the district.
And that ten percent vote, do they have to decide as part of that vote what they want to do? Or is it just to dissolve and then?
No, it's just.
Would decide what to do after?
No, it's a dissolution. And what you would have to do is determine debt that the town would be inheriting as a result of that dissolution because the debt would inherit of the town.
Have we, have you looked at that?
There's a provision in the statute that says no district shall be terminated until all of its outstanding indebtedness is paid, unless the legislative body of the town on which the district is located agrees in writing to assume the indebtedness.
In one of the documents there, there was a, almost became dissolved, but I don't know if it was the mayor at the time. Art Powers basically was indicating that we should consolidate our administrative functions. But because Worthington had an outstanding debt, he said, was kept pushing it off another two or three years to get rid of that debt. We never got rid of that debt.
Yeah, you would need audited financials before it would be advisable to go down that road because you really need to know what the debt looks like.
And we don't know that yet.
No, but we're held accountable, and that was one of the issues too, is we found out in their annual report that the USDA USDA loan that Worthington has, has us as taking on the loan if they default on it. So in essence, we do hold some responsibility somewhere or another. So this is another legal issue that needs to be resolved, as Attorney Dinoff just pointed out.
Can we FOIA those records? Are they public agencies?
Yes, they are.
Absolutely.
So, so moving forward, I'm looking at your recommendations here and what Attorney Dinoff just said, the town should hire an accounting firm to independently audit both districts. So my question is, if both districts don't want to be audited independently by the town, can they stop it? Or can we say we want to audit you independently or is it? You just FOIA their records. I guess to get the record, yeah. I mean, that seems like an interesting area.
cumbersome way to do an audit, but if that's what's required.
FOIA them? FOIA the records? If they don't want to turn them over? Which they don't probably need to, right, under their?
Well, they're a public agency, so they.
They can be FOIAed.
They are subject to FOIA, yeah.
Responsible for their debt anyways.
I would think so. And Jack's pointed this out, particularly with Worthington, the fact that the matter is, is if there's a distribution problem that occurs and it becomes part of the high school or the elementary school, the town is still going to be accountable for it no matter what happens with the district in terms of what they're doing as far as an operation. So that's one of the concerns we have because they do not have chlorine residual present. And that's a problem we perceive. In that area, we could have issues coming up with slime growth and stuff like that. And that, we don't know if they're addressing it all. So, I mean, those are the conditions that we need to find out. So in order to do this, and my recommendations are actually several because one is the legal part of it, to see legalistically what can be done. And then there's the financial part of it. And there's the other third part is this infrastructure. I have, and I've kind of brought this up every time I've had an opportunity to bring it up, is the infrastructure is my main concern because right now, and pointed this out again, we inherited East Berlin, and it's a mess. I do not want to be able to be positioned of inheriting Worthington and Kensington, and they're a mess. I do know that one of the things I think that would right away would initiate additional assistance is that there's overlapping activities that they have that would bring almost a million dollars into play right away in terms of the extra money that could be used for infrastructure improvement.
Combining?
Combining them.
Because you combine the functions.
Because you got the legal, engineering and administrative functions and all these functions that.
You know what I worry about is if, like you said, the other two are a mess, and they have these debts and whatever. I mean, if ten percent of the voters decide to dissolve, we're going to end up taking them anyways. And/or if they're a mess and we don't acquire them, we're going to have a subsect of the town that has an issue. The rest are going to be fine.
I think so. And I think it's more complicated than that because every day I learn something new. And it's not that I'm looking for it. I just find it. Because the number of systems that we have versus what they're billing and what we're billing, it's a nightmare. I can't explain it any other way. And they like it that way. I mean, nobody wants to change it. To me, it doesn't make any sense to go down that path. And we're not getting our fair share in terms of our, so we're putting out, we're paying for our water consumption. But I think they're being basically supported by some of the activities because they're not paying their fair share.
So the, I thought the interesting thing, you mentioned it and I read was that, because there's information out there, the water rates. Oh, yeah, well, we get the cheapest water rates, the Kensington Fire District.
I tried to make that.
And you explained that, yeah, which is good because I don't, I don't think, I know people that moved to town. I don't even think people that lived there their whole life understand what they, what they did, you know, what they do to people in those districts, how they charge them. But so, folks, what do we, so what do we do from here? I mean, it's obviously an issue we need to address. Do we start with the audit? Try and get them to, yeah?
I think so.
Is that what you guys think? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing that's a possibility is, you know, you have private water companies. If they step in, you know, and they're interested in these two water, other water districts, they're going to have to fork over that information anyways, right?
Yeah, you're pointing out a good point because Regional Water Authority came in about three or four years ago. Wanted to purchase us over. They were actually considering it. However, I pointed out that you can't just do it with us because you need to, you need to Worthington and Kensington. They couldn't get Worthington and Kensington to come to the table. This is part of the problem we have also, but they couldn't do it. And they gave up on that.
We have a meeting coming up with them, right?
January third.
January third. One of, there's, I have many concerns. One of my concerns is that I'm unsure that if you live in one of the other two districts and you're getting, you're getting a tax on your home for wa, tax, a property tax, you may have a well and septic system, but you're still paying the tax. I'm not sure if that's broken out or not. And, you know, so if you, if you live in a district and you have your own well and your own septic, you shouldn't be subject to the tax.
I live, I'm in that same situation. And I got the tax bill, and they objected. And they said, that was a mistake by the Berlin Tax Department. They get their numbers from the town hall tax department. One of my customers objected. They're serviced by Berlin. And they said, well, we take the tax money because that supports the fire department. So.
No.
I just responded to them actually, who you're pointing out to because, correct, that's probably what they were told, but that's not accurate, yeah.
I know it's not. I mean, that's the excuse they were using.
Correct. There's another issue, and Jack's just brought it out too, because this, this idea of them having our customers, if they're our customers truly, and they don't go through the meters of their master meters, that means that those customers are paying a real estate tax extra. And they're our customers. So we're only being reimbursed for the water usage, but not for the real estate tax, which is a little funny to me. I'm not sure.
You provided me said that they can only tax their customers.
Actually, in their regulation, that's correct.
People not located in the district. People are their customers.
They're not supposed to.
So they're actually not supposed to be taxing those people. But they are. And some of them are large sums of money.
They are. That's what we're going to do.
You know, I think we have to do our due diligence and do the audit, right? That's the appropriate thing to do.
I agree.
In my mind, however, it almost seems like a foregone conclusion. You know, I think we have to just become one. It seems like that's the only fair way to do it. Why have three water departments in the town? And it also seems like an economy of scale, right? Where you have less administrative staff, less overhead.
That's a key word, I would say. Economy of scale is an engineering term that's used.
Yeah, it almost seems like a foregone conclusion. And unless we see something crazy where it's highly advisable against it. But, you know, I think we do have to move forward with the audit.
Yeah, I agree.
And the other thing I'm a little upset about is maybe they haven't been invited, but how come no one from the other districts have come to speak with us about this? And we've only seen.
We've just started meeting. We had one so far.
Yeah, I think they just said one. We invited them to a meeting and we.
Are they playing ball? Are they talking or?
We're starting to, the first communication we're having is the last meeting we had. So we're trying to open that dialogue. I mean, there are many, there are issues that are, that are common between the three, you know, Ray concentrated on the water. But in the sewer side, we, in the storms that we're having, we are exceeding our capacity to Mattabassa. And at some point, if Mattabassa has an excursion, it's going to come back and they're going to come back to us. You have, you have an allowable amount of capacity that you have. What happens is you have leakage in your piping. And I think you know that we just recently have relined a good portion of the Belcher Brook interceptor that we own. But we, we're starting to determine that there's an awful lot of inflow and infiltration in coming from some of the other districts. Unfortunately, we don't have the metering capability so that we can say that we charge you more because you have more inflow. We don't have that capability. So pretty much at this point, the way we bill is we bill, all districts pay the same amount per gallon. That's unfortunate because the other districts, we think, may have more inflow and infiltration than the, but that, that is subject to more study.
I think we need the audit to move forward. And then once we get the information public, I think it'll self-destruct from their members. Because I haven't met anyone. Once they understand the situation, I think it's a good idea to keep these separate ones. Except the paid board of directors from the other one, from the other district. Yeah, once the public understands what they're up against.
One, I just throw one other thing in there, and I'm off, I'm a little off of our talk, Ray. One other issue that may, it sounds funny, but there's a staffing problem amongst all of us, particularly in people, and you, Charlie, you'll understand this, in that the workforce is aging. It's very difficult to get people to, it sounds funny, but people don't want to work, sewer and water. And it's difficult. So we're actually right now, Ray's working on. actually, right now, Ray's working on a way that we're going to start an apprentice program, so that we can bring younger people into the program. You can't go out and hire somebody. Right now, if you, if anybody who had the right license, I can get you a job in New Milford for $120,000, if you have a high school degree, and you have a Class C license. How do we get that license?
Yeah, let me get that contact.
New Milford's applying, and when I was left Litchfield, I was looking for somebody on a very, very small plant for $90,000, $95,000, same thing.
I think it's one of those career paths that people don't...
Even the technicians that handle the pipes, I go to a trade meeting, I'm one of the youngest guys there. I mean, people just don't do it anymore.
Well, Ray's one of our younger guys.
Yeah, most of my friends are recycled, actually, so they're all doing the extra work, so.
So, so then, we agree. So let's move forward. I know we have a meeting in January. Can we at least, at that meeting, it's, we would just, you know, we can attend in the audience, but can we at least ask for their financials? Have we asked that already?
I think...
We could, we could put it on, we need to, we need to share agendas.
I'm going to work on the agenda. We'll just put in the agenda. I've been putting together the agenda, and probably some of that information is what we need, so we'll put that agenda together.
If they won't give it to us, right?
Right. They go to FOIA if we don't give it to us. I mean, you know, I think we're trying to work on the betterment of the town and doing things, and I hear a public health issue too with the water, that's scary.
Subsequent to your meeting tonight, I did talk to Ray. This, this report that Ray gave you was given to the Water Control Commission tonight, and I've asked Ray tomorrow, once you have this, you read it, that we send it to the, to both of the water districts, so they've seen Ray's report also.
Oh, good.
Send that tomorrow.
Oh, good.
I don't want to just blindside them. I want them to know.
No, they didn't. No, they didn't. I mean, we want them part of the discussion. We want to work with them, I mean, if we can, to remedy this.
He's probably going to deny all the things he put in the report previously, so that's one of the other issues. He's changed his philosophy dramatically, so.
Well, yeah, yes, sir.
Ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you may.
Does the town's auditor also audit the Water Commission?
Yep. I think they do. We pay a portion for our audit.
They do. The Water, oh, our Water Commission, yes. Yes, they do. I was thinking Kensington Water, no, they do ours, yes.
I would suggest that, I saw in the packet that Ray put together, that at least for Kensington Fire District, as of when they filed their annual report in May of 2016, that they did have an outside auditor, London and Company. So one suggestion I would have would be to talk with the town's auditor about getting a list of deliverables, because what's in here looks like an income statement. There's no balance sheet in here for Kensington Fire District, and then for Worthington Fire District, what's in here is portions of an audit, the year ending 6/30/16.
I think the Kensington Treasurer audited the Worthington Fire District system. I'm not, I can't recall.
I suggest you would be, get a list from your auditor and transmit it to the board, or have your auditor talk to their auditor.
Okay.
Because you can't, from looking at this, I can't tell anything about the liabilities.
That's no idea.
I don't know what they are. I don't know, I don't know whether any of it...
I agree with you there.
No idea.
Okay. Yeah.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, thanks, Ray.
Excellent report.
All right. Agenda item number 10.
What's there?
It's for the federal local bridge preservation projects. Mike Hearn is here, and Mike is here to discuss the request of state DOT to approve our local bridge program, and so that we can enter into an agreement with GM2 to do some engineering work for us.
Right, the, these are four bridges. One, two bridges are over the Mattabasset River, Worthington Road and Berlin Road. And Wildemere, Wildemere Road goes over Belcher Brook, and Heritage Drive goes over Stocking Brook. Essentially, this is a rehab project. This is basically the get ahead of total replacement, which is very expensive. So, the town followed essentially a DOT-formatted process to select a consultant, which is GM2. They'll be doing a full, basically, survey, conceptual design, preliminary design, all the way through, and even oversee construction. So the fee that was negotiated was $412,100. Eighty percent of this will be federally funded under the federal local bridge program, and that, that program has a very structural aspect to it. There's steps you have to follow through. The, so what we're looking for right now is to get approval to proceed with GM2 to get the design process rolling.
I would tell them about the recent letter we got from DOT about timing on this.
Oh, yeah, there's, apparently, the federal government is set an alert out that some of the funds that affect this project might be rescinded. So what, so we reached out, we had our consultant reach out to DOT and also their liaison engineer, because we're like, we have to stop now. And apparently, they want you to stay on schedule. They say if you're not, if you're not in schedule in any particular funding year, your funds are in jeopardy. So GM2 is now aware of that, because they actually did the research to find out, is this a no or is this a go? So right now, it's, but that is a cautionary aspect to this, that we have to stay on schedule, and GM2 is, you know, notified of this.
So as long as we're on schedule, we're okay?
Yeah.
Well, stay on schedule, please.
It's a large bill. We don't want to foot that one.
Yeah.
Okay. I will move to authorize the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement with GM2 Associates, Inc., in the amount of $412,100, to provide the required repairs of the Worthington Ridge Bridge, Berlin Street Bridge, Wildemere Road Bridge, and the Heritage Drive Bridge. Authorize the town manager to execute change orders when required to complete the projects in an amount not to exceed $453,000.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Harry Nonealls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Hey, before, so is this federal bridge program, just before we leave it, is this a program that we, we have always taken advantage of, or this is a new program?
This particular one is, no, this is a new one.
Oh.
In fact, I think we're like the second or third town, the very first town to do was Litchfield.
Oh, great. So, that's nice. I mean, that's...
Eighty percent is nice.
Uh, yeah, it is. It's fantastic. Well, thank you.
Eighty percent is around for, let me, let me just elaborate, for total rehabs.
Okay.
But about, about three or four years ago, there was a discussion between myself and the DOT, and they wanted to look at doing rehabs instead of doing total construction. So there's two bridges in Litchfield that, right now, Wheeler Road and Litchfield Road, which are being done under that, under this program. They're the first two bridges.
Okay, well, I'm glad we were able to take advantage of it. Thanks for figuring that out. Okay, next, what do we got?
Agenda item number 11 is the streetlight maintenance services, Tanco Lighting. We're looking for an amendment to the contract to continue our maintenance with them. Tanco was the, was the contractor that we used to do the conversion over to the LED lighting. They were part of the process when we purchased the lights from, from Eversource. They've done, they've been the firm that we've been working with on the maintenance program, and what we're asking for is to extend it again for another few mon, six months?
Yeah, until May 31st.
And Mike's here to ask any questions.
Questions?
Yeah.
My annual question. Does these include the fields, the LED lights? Have they been replaced at the fields yet?
I believe...
The answer is no.
Well, the, yeah, the answer is no on that.
But will they be?
Yeah, but that wouldn't be under them, that would be under the town, because these are streetlights that they, that they're under. The LED lights conversion is just something that we would do as part of a normal conversion.
All right.
You mean like at Sage, at the parks, all the parks?
Yeah, yeah.
They're all still regular?
They were working on converting. We converted the ones over to the basketball courts and the things, but I think Sage was the next one that they were looking at doing. I think, Peter, there were several that were out to that point.
Okay. Questions on this? If not, we'll take a motion?
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to enter into agreement to extend the existing contract with Tanco Lighting of San Francisco, California, to provide streetlight maintenance services through May 31st, 2019, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on this?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Harry Nonealls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 12.
Agenda number 12 is to lock in the gasoline contract for calendar year 2019. The CROG bid was opened at the end of last week, and East River was, energy was the lowest again this year. We couldn't sign it last week, and, and we, at that point, it was like three cents lower than our current price. I was a little concerned. As of this morning, it was seven cents lower, seven and a half cents lower than our current price.
Bonus, bonus, nice.
It's better to be lucky than good. If you, if you authorize us, if you authorize me to sign it, we'll sign it tomorrow morning, and, and we'll go ahead for another year.
Okay. Make a motion. Let's get this signed before prices go back up.
Move to award the contract for the purchase of 74,000 gallons of gasoline for the calendar year 2019 to the lowest bidder utilizing the CROG purchasing consortium.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Harry Nonealls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 13 is amendment to the town's ethics policy. I think you were aware that the police union had filed an MPP against the town with the state labor board, because the union members of the police department were required to sign multiple ethics policies. They feel that they have one as part of their, their, what they have to sign, but to be a member of the police department. They felt that the, the ethics policy was duplicative, and that they were subject to multiple levels of enforcement, including a potential fine in our, in our, in the town's policy. We took it before the ethics board. They reviewed it, and you have the information there, where the ethics board felt that, that the police ethics policy covered them, it was, was equal to it. So they recommend, I guess they would say, and Kate, correct me, but they agreed to or recommended a modification to the definition of an employee to include what's in, I believe you have it in blue, except for the employees of the police department, to include all officers, dispatchers, and staff who do not have purchasing authority, given that these employees are subject to separate ethics policies reasonably equivalent to or exceeding the requirements of this policy.
Okay, thanks.
It was simply, Board of Ethics had suggested that it be in one session, or one part of the ethics policy under a public in-town employee. And when Jack reviewed it, he was afraid that that would go against the charter. So at that point, we just, we looked at who we distribute the policy to, and felt that that was a better place to put it. Ethics Board is aware of that, that we thought that we should change it a little bit, and they seem to be on board with it. So as you go through the emails, you'll see that history there.
Good. Okay, so we'll take a...
Okay. I move to amend the ethics policy section 1-11 to include the following language. Town manager shall cause a copy of this policy and any other policy approved by the town council to be distributed to every town employee, except for the employees of the police department, to include all officers, dispatchers, and staff who do not have purchasing authority, given that these employees are subject to separate ethic policies reasonably equivalent to or exceeding the requirements of this policy, and public official within 60 days after enacted enactment of such policy.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
No.
Harry Nonealls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Number 14.
Agenda item number 14 is the town council calendar for 2019, 2020.
Nope. Calendar.
If I may, just make one comment. I know you can't, that you're adopting the calendar tonight. I will just ask you one thing, if you would, in the next year, consider having a town council meeting, even if it's a special meeting, at the senior center. When I, when I meet with them, they, they express that they would like to come to a town council meeting, except that at night. Many of them can't get out at night, and also, being upstairs, it's somewhat problematic for them to get here. They would, they would really truly appreciate having a town council meeting at the senior center at some time during the year, one or, one or two times a year. They would really, would go a long ways.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
And, and, not at night, though, during the, what'd you say?
Yeah, I don't know. I would say that it would probably be better if we could do it later, you know, late afternoon.
Late afternoon or something.
If you could.
Yeah.
But that, that is one thing that they have expressed to me, they would really appreciate.
They did say that the other day when we were there, too.
What's wrong with that?
No, we'll, so we can work that out as we go. If we approve this calendar, we'll figure out which dates we can all make it.
What would happen, just so that you're aware of it, and the parish and council can correct me, is you're adopting your schedule right now for your regular meetings.
Okay.
If you decide to change the venue or the time, then we have to give proper notice, especially with the time. That should be 30 days prior, so that then you can still keep it as a regular meeting. If you don't give the 30 days notice, it's a special meeting. That's the only difference.
That's right.
Okay, so if we give the notice, we figure it out a month ahead of time?
Yep, so that, I can, I mean, I'll get it on the web and everything, but just so that you're aware that it may cause a special meeting instead of a regular meeting.
Okay. Yeah, okay, perfect. So are we taking a motion on this, or are we going to check our calendar?
I do have a question.
Yes.
In July, the first meeting of the month?
Second.
The second?
Yeah.
I mean, so many people take that week off.
Yeah, is that...
Is there a possibility of moving it to 9/23? That makes more sense.
Yeah, because that's, that's July 4th, right? We can, so what do I want to move it to? What do I want to move it to?
July 9th doesn't matter, but just so that you notice that the Board of Finance is on the 9th.
But haven't we had meetings where...
Had meetings before, yeah, just so you're aware.
Okay.
So you want to correct, or you want to amend it to the 9th and the 23rd?
Yeah. You guys, how do you feel about it?
That's, that's fine.
I think that's good. That's good.
I think it helps too with not having meetings in August also.
Oh, yeah, because you got a later one in July, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, all right, so, so are we doing a motion tonight? Are we going to wait till next time?
I would...
Wait?
You got to do it now?
Do it now? Are we doing it now?
I would do it now.
Let's do it.
No, why, why?
Yeah, why wait? Why wait? Let's do it.
Calendar committee doesn't want to have another meeting.
Okay, I know. It's very hard to get all you guys together, I know, we get that.
Move to adopt the town council meetings calendar for 2019 and January 2020 as amended.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And what do we got? Town manager report.
All right.
Sir.
Town manager report. One thing happy to report on is we've started the work on 77 Elton Road. The crews are out there today, starting to mow and remove debris and brush and things like that. So we've, we've started to do the work there. That, that will look better as we go along.
Finally.
On, on January 2nd, the town will be going live with its new website.
Okay.
You know, we have a website, but we're going, we've, we're modifying it. We're hoping that it will be more user-friendly, if you will. So that should start on, on January the 2nd. I wanted to go on the 1st, but Kate said she wouldn't come in to switch. If you noticed, and I wanted to...
Doing New Year's Day, come on.
I hope everybody, we've been sending you information. I think you had someone come before the town recently and say that they were worried about no decorations in the town. And it was, it was ironic, coincidental, if you will. Within a couple of days of that occurring, a sophomore at the high school came to see us, wanted to put lights on the street poles in Kensington, in Kensington. We tried to work with them, and unfortunately, there's no power there right now, so we couldn't do that. But they did, if you saw, we worked with them, and we suggested putting garland and ribbon. So they've done that, and we've also committed in, to the future, working with them. So next year, there should be some lights, along with the garland.
High school, upbeat?
Upbeat did it.
Upbeat, yeah.
It was funded, it was also funded. There's a newspaper article today in the Berlin Citizen about it, and we have an outside source who paid for it. I've talked to Chris Edge. We're going, I've talked to several towns, and most towns, though, the town doesn't fund the lights, like...
A donation, right?
Donation. So we're going to work on doing that. I actually got a call from a resident today, asking why we didn't have any lights. I explained it was in the budget, and, and we talked about it, and she's got a committee just started, and I told her, if she wanted to come out, we'd meet with her and talk about how we could fund this for next year. We're looking at that for next year.
Jack, I have a question. A number of years ago, Berlin Juniors donated a lot of, like, banners that we used to have hung down Farmington Avenue. Do you remember, Kate, when we did that? Do you remember, Kate, when we did that?
Easily, because that was a while ago.
I mean, what happened to them? Do you know?
I could ask Steve Wood.
They were holiday ones as well.
I did ask Steve Wood as part of this, what the pass was, and Steve was not aware of any decorations.
He was in Juniors, so I know we did it.
We'll have to find out.
Thank you.
Were those turned over to the town care?
Yep, they were.
I'm going to box them.
I bet they are.
Probably down, down the complex, but what the...
And they had them for other seasons, too.
Yeah.
Let's find them, if they're around. Usually, right?
Yeah.
I know.
Why not? Something to use.
And a lot of towns have them. I know in New Britain, they have them, where business will, you know, donate that particular one, so.
Yeah, like sponsored by them. They get their name out there.
Exactly.
Yeah. Let's try and get that going.
Where's Chris Edge?
Yeah.
Chris is aware of this. We've talked, he's already started to work on this. The Veteran Commission received some very generous donation, gift card donations, significant amount. We will be giving those to you, just, we're, they're being used during the Christmas time, but on the, in the January meeting, we will ask you to approve the donation of those gift cards. But they did receive quite a healthy donation of gift cards for distribution during the Christmas season. And we, it wasn't, we get to the point of being able to get this on the agenda, but we will bring this to you at the next meeting. Over the next three, four months, when you enter the town hall, you will see an upgrade downstairs. The Facilities Committee is going to be working on painting the hallways downstairs and cleaning them up and working so that, you know, and changing the vestibules some. That large formidable desk that's there will be removed, being replaced with some tables and eventually some computers. So residents come in and can use the computers to make out permit applications and things like that, making it a working space, and that, that will be removed. The walls will be painted and upgraded, and the doors also. The one thing that we went back and forth on quite a bit, and we did talk to Lorraine Stubbs, and we've committed to keeping it, was that large seal that's there. It's, it's actually not, doesn't, isn't the current seal, but we're trying to find out the history of it. It will remain. We talked about taking it down, and just, you know, in conversation, and the amount of information we got back from Lorraine, she's been working with Kate, that will remain, but the walls and everything will be, being upgraded. I'm requesting that the ordinance committee meet, if possible, January 10th. If you can look at your, if you look at your schedules. The purpose would be to discuss tax abatement ordinances, working without permit ordinances. After our last meeting, staff met, we talked about the signs. We felt that the proper place to regulate signs was in the town ordinances. That way, it comes under the town council. So we want to talk about an ordinance regarding signage within the town. And then, the last part is the golf commission is requesting an ordinance modification. Currently, in the ordinance for the golf commission, it requires them to balance their budget, the revenues versus their expenses, including their expenses, their internal expenses, if a staff goes down there. There's been some, just, if, if, if they're going to do that, there would have to be a 4% increase, I believe, in fees at the golf courses. They're recommending no, no increase in fees, but they point out, I said, the ordinance doesn't allow you to do that, so they're requesting a modification of the ordinance. So that would be open for discussion during an ordinance committee meeting.
I can't make it that evening.
Could we, I just suggested that night.
Okay. I've got my first State Central meeting for the year that night.
I'm away, and I think there's a field committee that night.
Okay. You can just, I'll look for another night that, is there, is a Thursday night good or Tuesday? Which night's good?
Generally, not.
Okay.
Either have State Central or DTC, but...
What if we put it like on the week, the Tuesday that you don't meet?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Six o'clock, seven o'clock?
Either.
Six, let's...
Six.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll put it for... On a Tuesday?
Yeah. So it should be like about the 15th, I think. So we're in that range.
Fifteenth.
Okay. I'll send out, I'll send out an email, and then you can respond. Let me know if it works for you.
Thank you.
Last meeting, Charlie had asked for some information on the health department cost comparison to other, other towns. That information is pretty much, Christie did some research on it, is available on the web. I've given you some, we went back to the health district and said, are there any additional fees? I provided you with input from the health district as far as history of their fees, some information on their, their current fees, if there would be any additional fees other than their $6 per, per person. And then I gave you a spread, a spreadsheet that showed how that compares with many other towns. If you know, as you know, if you look on there, the, the charge per person or per household is, is quite different per town. There are some, there are, there are some that are slower than our health district. There are some that are much higher than our health district. So that's the range of fees right now. Let you take a look at it. The one thing we will continue to look at is, what would it cost for us to have ourselves go alone? And that, that information, Charlie, because we were trying to get that from other people, it's, it's all over, so I'm going to have to try to take that information and, and massage...
I don't expect an instant solution, but I'm concerned this director's taking the district in a whole new direction, renting very expensive, you know, office space and so forth, and I don't want to commit our taxpayers to support that lifestyle if it's not needed. It may be the best way to go. I just want to make sure it is.
Yeah. When, when, when I, when they first proposed that, and we, we met, we being the town managers met with them, I think to a T, to, to, to one of us, we all who said to them, we're, we're agreeable to going in this direction, but at no, no additional cost to our residents. And that was what, that's one of the things that we did say to them, and we put that onus on them. Now, that being said, if you've read any of the literature, any of the information coming from Governor LeMond, he's back to proposing a possible consolidation of health districts anyway. You know, it's, it's in the very early stages. Last time, when that was proposed, a year or two ago, there was a lot of pushback, because it was looking, for, for districts like ours, we would, we would, we would see a very large increase in our cost for health districts.
The other, I like the idea of centralization for economy, like the water departments, economy of scale, but there's a big factor of convenience for our citizens. To get any little permit from the health department, it seems like there's a permit required for everything. You're going to have to travel to another town now, which, especially like some of these church groups and stuff, that's going to be a major headache for them. If they can compensate by putting it online or something like that, it may work out.
Well, that's where everything's going to have to go. I mean, and, 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 you know, one of the things I have to say is, I come from an area where the Torrenton area Health District services 23 towns in northwestern Connecticut, and they have the one, the one office in Torrenton. And I will say, the one thing is, they've always been very cooperative, very easy to work with, but, you know.
Maybe, I say, maybe they can compensate for some of these smaller things, just do it online.
Yep. Well, that's what we're, and that's one of the things that the town's looking to do also, is to put this online. I think that's, I got a couple, well, just as, we are, we have a, I have a meeting with the, with the, the school about security. I think we have a direction on that. We're putting together some numbers on it, force, security force for the schools. At this point, it looks like that we would fund it out of Department 61, which would be under the town, and we'll just work out the, the management of that. And the last thing we've been, and we also talking about is adding, adding a, an IT director for the town, which, which would help coordinate activities between not just the town, but the Board of Ed, and, and, and the, the police department. We all have tactical people, but we don't have that strategic person, and we want to, we think that would be a good thing to have that strategic person. And so on the budget this year, it's one of the things that we'll be pushing for.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Council Communications, anything?
Merry Christmas.
Yes, definitely. Merry Christmas. Goes without saying.
I actually have a question for the Corporation Council. When we talked last month about the political signs and everything, you had mentioned about the wording on the signs. So for political signs, can you, is it, can they put anything they want and you can't take them down for wording? Can you explain it a little bit more for me?
Sure.
So that I can understand.
When you're talking about political speech, it receives greater protection under the United States Constitution than commercial speech. So if you, you can't really have, have to have content-neutral regulation. In other words, any restriction upon posting signs has to be narrowly tailored to suit a legitimate governmental purpose. So typically, you don't see restriction of content on signs. You see restriction of location, of placement of signs, in order to avoid any safety hazard in a sightline and the like. So you don't typically see ordinances that restrict content of political signs.
Okay. So I guess I'm curious, because after the discussion, we didn't ask who had made the complaints, and I have to say that I was pretty, you know, it just didn't seem like we put closure to it. So I ended up contacting Mark, and there were three complaints, and one was the complaint about the, the, you know, nobody pays taxes or whatever, and the other one was bigot. So Mark, you were the person who complained, according to Mark, our town planner, about the tax law.
Yes.
So can you share your thoughts as to the reason that, were you concerned about the words?
Yes. Wanted to be taxpayer, I just didn't, I think that was pretty offensive to everyone in town.
But again, it, what you're saying, it's...
Well, I guess, well, I don't, I don't, I don't know the background of that sign. All I know is what you just said. So I don't know, how's that political?
But it didn't, but...
Is that to further a candidate? A campaign for a candidate?
I'm not sure. The other sign was about...
I would say that's not, that, well, before we go past that, that's not, I don't, I don't think that sign was political. And anyway, it was just offensive to me, as a citizen of Berlin, but, and it was in the state right of way. So wording or not, it went down because it was, it didn't go down for the wording, it went down for state right of way, but, but on political signs, so I know there's a greater protection, but obviously, that doesn't mean that someone could say so-and-so candidate is a serial rapist. You can't just say whatever you want on a political sign, obviously, right?
No, because the constitutional right to political speech comes from the First Amendment, and there's certain restrictions upon First Amendment speech in terms of words you're not supposed to...
Use.
Use if you expect to have your speech protected.
Right.
So then the sign that said racist and bigot, that Ann Riley was the person who complained about that one, was that, you know, wrong? It was a political speech and...